Yeah, when I got the stuff from somebody.
Who prints stuff and a few of us do.
I do.
Yes.
I'm gonna kick out of the Sarah prints.
I agree with that.
I'm the same way with my face. Give me a resume and a red pen, I'll make you cry. Give it to me online, I'm like, oh, this is so much effort.
However, Justin, that clock is super ambitious. I was like, there's no way it took me six minutes to go get an agenda. Uh, did you hear from Mr. Bracken?
I did not, but it's time.
We got quorum. Wow, this is great. Uh, so I will call the March twelfth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Dr. Perthrich and Vice Chair Rosenberg with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, they pass. Uh, motion, or actually, are there any additions, changes, corrections to the minutes as presented? If not, a motion and a second would be appreciated.
I may have two.
Motion for the Vice Chair?
Second.
Dr. Perthrich, we're trading places. Uh, so we motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposition? Seeing none, that passes. Uh, so, public comment from the non-existent crowd, uh, I don't see anybody, so privilege of the chair, we're moving on. Uh, reports of commissions, boards, committees, and staff, so we're just gonna work ourselves this way, skipping me, and then I'll come back before them, so.
Dr. Ruth.
Uh, nothing to report?
Ah, easiest report ever.
Yeah, I don't either, um, I have not been fully on top of the schedule for my group, but I have figured out how to get on the schedule.
Fair.
Um, HAC met last week, um, it was a pretty short meeting with just some like updates of different projects, but the, um, one thing to bring to Planning Commission attention is that, um, I think May timeframe, I may be wrong about that, but, um, we'll be looking at a plan development for the Chestnut property, um, for that Habitat for Humanity, um, project for affordable housing, so that's pretty cool. I may be wrong, Sam, about the exact date, we were just kinda talking.
It doesn't get submitted, so it's in the future, so therefore?
We were given a future date.
There you go.
So, um, so I just wanted to report that that's pretty cool, that that's something that we'll have, um, before us, and it goes along with the, uh, goals that the strategic plan has stated for, um, increasing affordable housing, so that's exciting, um. And everything else was pretty administrative, it was a short meeting.
Short-term rental, stuff like that though?
Oh, I'm so, so, you know, that literally seems to be something that I completely block out for no reason. I'm actually super supportive of what's going on with, you know, it's, it's very strange. Uh, anyway, yes, we did talk about short-term rentals and how there is a moratorium currently, um, on new short-term rentals, um, while things are getting figured out, um, new software might be used in order to, um, gather data about what is actually happening, um, and the hope is to spend less money and have people comply more and to limit, um, the kinds of abuses that have occurred in the past with short-term rentals.
Perfect, Dr. Perthrich?
So I don't think anything from either the Climate Action, uh, the Transportation Advisory Board, just kind of a heads up for people who are interested. Um, we have kind of a work session on Thursday, my students are working on doing some traffic and pedestrian safety planning for the mile square. Cause we have these kind of like transportation safety corridors that focus on the major corridors, they're mainly focused on bicycle transportation and corridors, but there's a lot of intersection-related issues, um, that cause vehicular and pedestrian kind of risks, so that's gonna be a meeting of the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. It's, it's a student project, but hopefully can advance some of the stuff we're talking about, and it's a public meeting, so people are welcome. Just can't have a quorum of this body, otherwise we'd have to announce it as a meeting, um, but, um, some of you guys, if you're on the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, so probably can have another person there, um, yes, update on the, uh, the, 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 the moratorium on the short-term rentals, and I believe it will be coming back through the Planning Commission, right? Um, as some kind of code amendment to our, um, transient guest lodging ordinance to better differentiate between those things that are secondary as an accessory use, as we talked about, you know, renting out of your, a portion of your home, or for, or a portion of your whole house, but part of the time, and not have the, the displacement that we're seeing where people are basically doing investment properties for, um, so that'll be coming back to us. And maybe we'll be talking about tonight, um, or Sam, we'll talk about this, the City Council, as I talked about, met and had our strategic retreat in January, um, to look at the comprehensive plan, what were the major things that staff presented, things that they'd like to work on out of the comprehensive plan. Council could amend that, and, and then we were talking about things that we were thinking about for twenty-five, and, and then it was sent out to boards and commission chairs, and so to, to try to get, um, some bottom-up board kind of feedback on how can we, councils, you know, we try to set our plan for this upcoming year, but we also try to think about what's coming up in the year following, because sometimes that involves a budget item, like for example, we're gonna be getting into, um, having a consultant to help us revise our development codes, and that required budgeting the year prior. So, um, I'm not sure how th- this, this commission will be involved in that, but I think the City Council's looking to engage boards and commissions in shaping those priorities, so hopefully we'll be talking about that here.
Mr. Arbuckle?
So Parking and Transportation has not met since the last time we met, so I have nothing to report, and I will not be at the meeting on Thursday, so if any of you all want to, or to, if you wanna come, we could do that without.
You need to revisit your assignment, this is way too easy. Can't talk, my meeting's tomorrow. Um, thank you. Uh, so the only thing I have, uh, from HAPC is we, um, very similar to this meeting, uh, with some differences, um, our, our agenda item tomorrow is really just comprehensive, uh, plan assistance, addressing the things that HAPC, um, is, is involved with, but also, and this is kind of lingering in the background, is design guidelines, um, so as, as, um, we move forward with the goals, we're trying to weave those kind of things in, because that's, that's just kind of lived along, in my opinion, we've had opportunities and we've seized on them, and then other things, either occupy time, uh, staff availability, or resources, so, we're trying to make sure as we move forward with that, that we weave that in. Mr. Perry, we haven't filled the spot, uh, Houston Kiger's spot on that.
Correct.
Okay.
We're still looking for someone with architecture and construction background according to the bylaws.
Yeah, um, so if anybody knows of anyone with said experience or affinity, um, expertise, pick your descriptor, um, please let Mr. Perry know, uh, there's, obviously, we know there's an application process, but, um, uh, Mr. Kiger, uh, left the board, uh, because he now works for the city. I personally think it was okay, no, why can't you be on a board and commission that has something to do with your job? No, um.
Residency is not required.
Oh, yes, thank you.
For that, to fit that credential, so if anyone knows someone with architecture and construction background, even if they're not a resident, if they're willing to serve once a month in the evening, that's, that's, that's eligible.
Yeah, actually, the chair of the board when I joined HAPC, uh, doesn't live in Oxford, um, and again, the, the architectural, uh, expertise. So, that is, uh, all I have, uh, Mr., who wants to go first, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perry?
I'll go.
Perfect.
I've got a handout. Uh, this is regarding the development code update and design guidelines that you mentioned. Council in their retreat and then following meeting after their annual retreat, uh, adopted, uh, some targets, uh, for us as staff to work on, and some of those dates are in here. Uh, but we're looking at about an eighteen to twenty-four month process for, uh, updating our code. Our code hasn't been updated for twenty years, uh, not holistically, there's been a lot of updates since then, um, and our hope would be to be able to get this process underway, uh, yet this summer, uh, we've got an RFP out right now, um, and talking to consultants, there's, there's a lot of work, um, and there's a lot of cities and municipalities have money to spend on development code updates, so we're not sure how the reception's gonna be. Uh, hopefully we will be able to find a consultant that's available and willing, um, so we may be doing some personal invitations to reach out to them. But we would, what council adopted was, uh, updates to the commission, um, and then, uh, Mr. Wattnight and, uh, Zach met, um, Friday, and talked about, um, adding a, a consultant introduction at the beginning of the process, so after we are able to retain a consultant, we would have them come in and introduce themselves, and prior to that, we would have a meeting where, um, the commission would have just done a quick scan of the salient topics in the comp plan, the action items that would help prepare the commission members if it's an opportunity to, while we have the consultant here doing an introduction, uh, they can showcase some of the work that they've done in other communities, and kind of give a little, little bit of a, a flavor of what their experience is. Obviously, they would be reporting to staff, and staff would be working with them, uh, on their scope and their details on a, on a regular basis, but we want the commission to be aware of what's happening, uh, so then when it comes time to have the public open house, and, uh, when we're having the regular updates, there's, uh, some acceptance of their work product, uh, so that it can be also shared by the community as well. So this is an overview of the dates that we have in there with the Planning Commission and Historic Commission would be getting regular updates, um, on how the progress is going. Uh, we are going to have a team of reviewers of the RFP responses, and we hope we get lots of RFP responses, so we'll have a council member, uh, planning commission member, HAPC member, and staff reviewing those responses and scoring them, uh, and then we'll be, um, making a recommendation to council on who, uh, who our recommended consultant will be. We may have more than one consultant, it's a really big project, so if we, um, are able to refine out which consultants are better at which part, we may do it that way, we may have one that's specific to the Historic District Guidelines, and one that's specific to subdivisions, and maybe one that's specific to, uh, the planning and zoning law and, and the code, uh, we're not sure yet, we'll just see how the response is. And then, um, council will be deciding on who that, uh, who that one or more consultants will be, and then hopefully, uh, that will align with our, uh, June Planning Commission meeting, and be able to, um, introduce them, uh, that night, that's kind of what our hope is, so obviously, this is a draft schedule, uh, but it kind of gives you an idea of just how big this project is going to be, because it's not slicing and dicing the code that we already have now, it's most likely gonna be taking it all out and, and starting from scratch. And that would be subdivision, that would be zoning, that's Historic District Guidelines, we're also going to be doing this year under a separate contract, uh, access management, uh, with the Service Department. So curb cuts, access management, that's integral to how sites are developed, is how they're accessed, so that's something, we don't have our own local access management policy, uh, in addition to ODOT policy, so that's something we'll be working on as well, so a lot of projects this year.
So, but just to add real quick, um, like Mr. Perry said, this is a draft schedule, you'll notice there are, uh, gaps in there. A lot of that is, um, until we know who, uh, the co- the consultant or consultants are, uh, also where their expertise is and any, um, I don't wanna say if they bid on it, but obviously if, um, just for illustration, if there's one consultant that's working with both HAPC and, and our group and others, it may look a little different structurally than if there's two different contract, or I wanna say contractor, consultants, um, but we did intentionally leave in spaces and spots, um, there'll be updates at the meetings. Um, so, you know, for example, there's June and August, if we have a July meeting, there will be an update. Also, um, like Mr. Perry said, as certain topics come up or certain, uh, areas are addressed, um, we're gonna look at, you know, maybe there is, uh, you know, depending on the agenda, we may have, um, a work session ahead of a meeting, or, um, if there is no agenda items, maybe we might, uh, we've done that in the past, I know we have with HAPC. We've traded out a regular meeting and just said, hey, we have no agenda items, so we're just gonna meet and have a work session. Um, so that's where, tho- those were intentionally left, uh, open, really all we know at this point is until council, uh, executes a contract, or contracts, I should say. Um, but yeah, so again, it, it's funny, the next, really bad at calendar math, three months is half of the real estate of the list. But that's obviously because that's all we know, uh, concrete to this point, the other ones are benchmarks that we can pretty much forecast, uh, but, but like Mr. Perry said, it's draft in that if something's moving ahead of schedule or, uh, slower than anticipated, we can adjust it. I just anticipated, uh, what are we doing between, so. All right, um, anything else in your report, or, um?
I should add too to that, um, Zach has had quite a bit of experience with zoning code, uh, drafting and rewriting with other communities as well, so that'll be key for our process, uh, in, in making sure that the things, and he's also the one that administers our, uh, zoning code from a, um, implementation standpoint when it comes to reviewing developments. So that'll be really key to making sure that, uh, what our consultant is doing actually lines up with what happens in the, in the real world.
And I know this is your report, but I wanna add one more thing. I love giving your report. So the executive summary, um, part of also why, uh, and I love the saying, hurry up and wait, um, but if you look at especially land use and development, uh, half of those, uh, obviously Planning Commission is a potential partner or one of the key stakeholders in, uh, all of those, but HAPC is, uh, on half of them. So, it's one of those, that's where that potential of two consultants becomes key, because it may be something where, um, I'm trying to find one that, actually, none of them have directly, uh, design, develop design guidelines for residential and commercial development is both of us, so that might be a yes and, or a one A, one B, or a one with subsets, so. That's part of why we need to see what we're dealing with before, um, uh, we go forward, also the redevelopment further down, um, L three promote development, redevelopment of target areas. Um, you know, uh, some of the, uh, two of the five bullets include these people called Amtrak. So, we, we probably need a little more information even outside of selection of a consultant of where and what's going on with that. So, just, just for context for anyone who's eagerly avoiding the great weather and watching on YouTube.
So is it appropriate to ask questions, or is this just a report? It's not an agenda item on our, so it's not really a discussion item, we're just doing reports, but I don't know whether it's a subject to discussion.
You can field questions.
Probably up to you, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have any other items, so it's up to you however you wanna.
Yeah, and, and honestly, just as we were doing the agenda, I didn't, uh, because we didn't really have much, I didn't think to put it as an agenda item, but yeah, Mr. Perry, go ahead.
So I guess, thinking about the, the nature of the commission's engagement, um, do you, what kind of role do you see for, A, commission members, and then B, the public, I, I see them listed as updates. Um, and the only, you know, the only agenda item that listed as review, which might suggest something kind of formative is, is the entire package, so I'm kind of curious what you imagine the nature of the conversations, if there are gonna be conversations i- in the process, and, and how do you imagine public stakeholders being able to follow along in the development of the code, cause it's a pretty mammoth undertaking that touches all these different aspects simultaneously. Now, we obviously wanna get it right, and it's a democratic process, so I'm kind of curious how you imagine this going.
Can I answer the first part? As a, as a foundational piece, the approved comp plan is what we want the consultant to start with and become familiar with, before any discussions or work sessions or anything get into the devil of the details. And that's just from a, an amicable approach of a lot of the, um, yellow dots on the wall preference, that has already been done with the comp plan, so we wanna make sure that the consultant or consultants are able to get up well-selected and up to speed, and then based on, um, where we are at that point, that's, that's those gaps I was talking about, that's where if, if they come and update and everyone's like, yeah, they're dead on target, this is where we're looking, or, you know, and, and it's not to say that people won't have conversations, it's just we didn't wanna legislate or, or earmark, like, we will have a work session, and, and that's, that's honestly more on me, because the minute we say we're gonna do something, uh, and then we say, oh wait, hey, we've got this, that causes confusion and, and I think unnecessary stress for people saying, well, you said you would have this, so. In, in some sense, laying out minimalistic and adding to it is easier than throwing a whole bunch of things and saying, eh, we don't need to have that meeting, so that was part of the, the, the structural approach, at least from my understanding and my, my ethos.
I have a question to follow up on what, uh.
You didn't get to answer yet, I said I was just answering the first part.
Well, I wanna, I wanna ask a question because it has to do, so as far as like the, the, what you literally just said, and then the, like, responsibilities of commission members, like, for April twenty-fifth, we may time twenty twenty-four, who is responsible for the scoring of responses for these consultants?
We're, we're going to have a selection committee of staff, and then, um, I think it's either one or two commission members, and, uh, I think believe one council member. I need to, I don't have the RFP in front of me.
That's all contractual, um, that's far beyond the purview and, and say of our commission, that's, that's fairly standard.
Yeah, so the staff will oversee that, but we'll, we'll be relying on some, uh, appointed, um, folks for that as well, um.
Thanks, it was literally just about that specific.
Okay, I can look it up for you if you, if you need it.
So I guess I'm, I'm kind of coming back to the question of what, how you imagine this going kind of procedurally, I mean, what's the nature of an update versus a works, a work session, work sessions don't really allow public participation, so I mean, if a, if the public wants to contribute along the way, if we, I mean, I, I understand that the comp plan has a set of high-level objectives, but as you know from dealing with the code, it boils down to a million nitty-gritty details, um, that, that, that have decision points, you know? Uh, and so wondering how we're going to be able to efficaciously do this, but also ensure that all the eyes are on it, and that the public has a say, uh, along the way, so I'm just unclear on how it's gonna go.
Well, we're very satisfied with how the comprehensive plan was so detailed, in the land use context and the action statements, uh, that we feel very comfortable with putting that in front of a consultant.
Yep, sure.
And having them prepare, going through the code, and looking for the things that are outdated, and then we also have our own list of problems that we have come across for the past several years, that we will let them know about as well, and then allowing them to, uh, tell us what's happening across the country, and how they've been handling some of these things, and what their recommendations are from a legal standpoint, and then we will bring those, um, into a work session between staff and the, and the consultant, and if we get to points where we're not clear whether the comprehensive plan, uh, really defined one direction or another, then we'll definitely come to the commission and ask for clarity, uh, to further refine that, uh, we don't envision, uh, public sessions, uh, before we get to a draft, uh, because of the, the intensive nature that the comprehensive plan went through, and the amount of time, uh, that we would like to complete this, this is, this funding is American Rescue Plan Act funding, um, which has time limits on it, uh, so, um, we're, we feel pretty comfortable about allowing the consultant to, you know, assist us with that, and if we get to points where we need clarity, or we have options, those, those are definitely things we want to present to the commission for response on.
So if, if, for example, the commission, I mean, I know that you have a checklist of things from working with the code that are those choke points that are frustrating to you, some of us may have those also from having worked with these various aspects of the code, I, you know, my, I, I, I understa- I, we have a great comprehensive plan, uh, it does detail a lot of the objectives, knowing how much those little nitty-gritty details matter to whether a code works to effectuate the goal or not, I mean, we've done lots of things that we thought would work and didn't, um, and so, to me, I see this as a really huge process, and it makes me, like, when I, I see one date for Planning Commission review for basically our subdivision code, our zoning code, the map, the ordinance, the historic preservation, I mean, I guess that's a really good strategy for me, being like, okay, um, but, you know, in terms of, uh, substantive input, and, and I do believe that, you know, I want expeditiousness, but I believe the public should be informed of the steps along the way, um, and have an opportunity to, I, I guess it's shock and awe could be a strategy, once you just like overload everybody, and they're like, they don't know where to, I, I, I think that, and, and I don't want us to get bogged down, but I guess I believe that this is a democratic process that should be transparent, um, and engaging and afford opportunities for people and stakeholders, we've learned from stakeholders, like, if you do that here, it's not gonna work, you know, like, and, and I benefited from that knowledge, so I don't want this, I hope that this is a process, it's a dialogue with the Planning Commission, and with opportunities with the community, I think that, um, we can do that and still have it be expeditious, but that'll require a lot of work, I'm willing to be here for work sessions to do that, um, you know, and, uh, so. I'm willing to be here for work sessions to do that, you know, and so that's just, that's, again, it wasn't on the agenda, it was a weird agenda tonight where there was nothing on the agenda but the minutes. I presume we'd be talking about something, but I think even something like that, like if we were to talk about the process for how we're going to adopt the code. I think if I were in the public or in the development community, I want want to know. And that might be an agenda item, I would want to see like on an agenda so that I could participate in that. So I I I want us to be off to a process where people feel like the process was solid and thorough and afforded ample opportunity for public engagement and stakeholder engagement so that we can. Sometimes in the process, you learn yourself and a new, you know, a new consensus emerges. And we adopt something that's really good, but there's no consensus around. I mean, it may be law, but I, so anyway, you you get my my point, so.
I just want to offer a little clarification. So in board governance, I mean, we all have our expertise. One of the things I've had the luxury of is public and nonprofit administration for twenty five plus years. The board sets the tone, staff implement that. So for example, as a parallel, for nothing other than illustration, I'm on the Regional Transit Authority. Other than sticking a shovel in the ground and being a board member for the better part of a decade, I have very rarely done staff work. We're getting a consultant to extend and expand the capacity of staff. There there is actually fundamental structurally, there's a difference between a nonprofit board, which is called the advocacy board, where you're in and you might volunteer and you might do this, and a governmental tone setting board. So I think that's also the approach I'm taking is the city's spending a lot of money on the consultant, so I want them to earn their money slash not do their job. And and it's not that I don't want participation or participatory, but I also want to make sure that this is quippish, but I would put dollars to donuts that not a single board member at Walmart knows how to run a cash register. And that's fine, their job is to set the tone and tenor for the company, the same as sure, nobody on city council has a firearms permit, that is Chief Jones and his department. So I want to make sure people have the space and the latitude, especially our staff who are paid to do this. I want to make sure they have the space and then we are kind of the bumper bowling, like, oh, no, that's what, not what we mean. I I honestly do not want, I want participation, but I also want to make sure that we're not getting derailed in the minutia. I also want to make sure that we're not rehashing things because my fear, honestly, my fear is if somebody's like, oh, I don't like that about the comprehensive plan, this is my chance to get. And I'm not saying that we can't change anything, I just want to make sure that we're moving kind of this giant freighter forward. And and we will have opportunities. I I also intentionally don't want to legislate, like I said, a schedule because it's easier to to turn a no into a yes than a yes into a no. So I want to be able to add things or clarify. And there's nothing to say that Mr. Caruth can't call Mr. Perry or Mr. Moore and say, hey, here's three things that drive me crazy about planning the code. That is, I I don't want our process to be where we are having a meeting so that we can discuss, you know, things that staff is well aware of, off street parking. So that's, that is the intent of this. In 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 some of your concerns are very valid, but it's not that those things won't happen. I just don't want to make a promise before I even know who we're working with. I think also I don't want to schedule public sessions and find out that this person did, the consultant or consultants did their homework and came in and for all we know, they're going to be YouTube junkies and watch all of our past meetings or minutes and they'll capture all that. I want to give them the chance to do their job or at least get us a litmus test before we do things. So it's not the absence of things, it's TBD in a lot of respects. But I I just want to make sure people understand that it's not, there is no like, oh, this won't happen. But again, with the dynamic of politics, especially in this country, in this city nowadays, I do not want to say, well, here's what I was thinking, and then if we change our mind, someone's like, well, but you said this. As I'm very intentional on that, I would rather add to our timeline than than make a ton of changes or or those things. And that's very intentional from from my perspective, so.
I just want to. Yeah, that I'm I am hopeful that the people that are ultimately hired will understand the import, like will have been down this road before. And will understand what buy in is about for a zoning code. And so I'm just putting it out there that, you know, that should be a consideration, I feel, when you select these people that, you know, not that they're only experts, but they have been, they've worked with communities previously and confronted this kind of issue, which is you want to be transparent, but you have to get the work done and what are some models for success?
That's a good point.
There's a lot of good virtual models out there right now too for engagement that could even go well beyond, you know, a typical commission evening meeting.
Yeah, and I, you know, I would just really like want to hand that issue off to the consultant.
Sure.
You know, with our approval that, you know, the way to do this is to, you know, develop the draft and, you know, have, they they will have ideas about this if they've done it before.
Because I know other boards and commissions I've been on have had, you know, survey links and that's great because then if you're busy Tuesday at seven o'clock, you can still participate. So and and again, to your point, you, I want to see what they propose so that we can add to it or or increase it because, and again, this is just having issued RFPs and awarded contracts. I don't want us to get the cart in front of the horse saying, we want this and this and this while there is a violent RFP process open.
Right, and we have.
A, I don't want to give people ideas, B, I don't want to steer people.
But just from an administrative point of view, Sam, when when it gets to the end, this is going to be accepted by council, right? That's that's the way it like gets rubber stamped.
Planning Commission will make a recommendation, just like the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Just like any rezoning or conditionally used, planning commission make a recommendation to city council.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we didn't talk about this, but it just occurred to me, there may be times where, because these are the back to back dates, it may be something where Mr. Scope, well, he won't be the chair by some of these dates. The chair of HAPC and this group decided to have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
That very well could be, but obviously we don't know what we're going to inherit until.
Yeah, we're doing the RFP simultaneous for historic district and for zoning code because there's so much overlap between historic resources and redevelopment potential. We want to make sure that if it's not the same consultant, they're working together with each other.
Right hand, left hand?
But if any of you want to see changes to what we have that's similar to what Dr. Pritchard was talking about with process or anything like that, or you yourself, David, if you want to see things done differently, definitely let me know right now what that would be. Or if you want to send me an email about what you would recommend. We could definitely share that with our review team and with a potential consultant.
To piggyback, Mike Stern Rosenberg. Who selects the people to be on the review? The RFP review?
Usually it's the the staff.
Okay, I just, that was something I just thought of, I didn't know.
Yeah, but if you want to designate someone from planning tonight, you can, you can do that.
I would volunteer to score.
I think we only have one.
I wasn't sure if it was one or two. I know we have at least one.
Well, I'd volunteer to look it over if it's just one. But I would also like to score it even if it's just one.
So we've got, we have four staff, two from boards and commissions and one from council. So I would say one from planning, one from HAPC would be how you, how we would determine that, so.
I don't want to, I have scored enough RFPs in my life.
Well, you know, as as the person who has been involved in Oxford zoning code for longer than anybody here, even Sam's been around for a long time. But I think two thousand and five, I was appointed to planning commission. I'm deeply vested in having, we've written a lot of those portions of the code. But that could also be a reason why I I'm not the right person to be on the process, you know?
Do you have any councils selecting?
What's that?
Are you guys selecting council member?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a question, this document that you have, is that something we can look at or is it just part of the?
This is the executive summary.
Of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it's just the executive summary.
Yeah, I, that's.
Sorry.
I thought it was something else.
I don't have a C P document.
Sorry.
So, you know, I mean, I I am, I am beyond thrilled, I mean, this is the way that we hoped it would go, which is, to be honest, what we did in two thousand and eight. Well, there was this zoning code rewrite before I got here. And then we did a comprehensive plan update in two thousand and eight and we never went back and updated the code other than piecemeal. And we made some good changes along the way, we wrote a subdivision code, we wrote a conservation development ordinance. We modified zoning along the way and, you know, but but it was always a problem that our code said one thing, I mean, our comp plan said one thing and our code said something different. So, you know, to me, I'm I'm like, again, beyond thrilled that we have new comprehensive plan and we have the commitment to update the code in in line, in alignment with it. So so I'm 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 thrilled with that. I just know that there are sometimes local particularities, like our lot sizes are a particular way, our laws in the in the alleys are different than they are other places. They're that that can make a code work or not work well for us. And so I think that, you know, the accumulated knowledge of us can help the code work better. And so, yeah, if we can strike a balance that that draws upon our expertise, the expertise of boards and commissions without slowing the process. If we can engage the public in a way that's meaningful to them so they feel like something, that they were afforded opportunities without something having been ramrodded. Like I think that the process and the product are hard to separate, a good process will produce a good product. You know, it's hard to imagine a good product that comes from a process that people aren't happy with. And so to me, I think that what the right way to do, then I, and I, I'm just, it's it's pretty fundamental, we're talking about at least three portions of, I mean, the subdivision, the zoning code, which is the map and the ordinance. The subdivision code, I don't know what we're going to do with like the conservation development, that was kind of out there. The HAPC regulations and?
Those are already done.
Those are already done.
Those are done in twenty nineteen.
So what else is on the scope of, what's else in the scope?
Historic district guidelines.
The historic district guidelines, okay. Which is going to be, and, yeah, so it's it's going to be really exciting. I just want everyone at the end to feel like the outcome and the process, they're just really happy with it and aligns with the goals and we got there the right way, so.
We've talked to some other cities who have done this recently and exactly what you're talking about is 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 what happens. Where one issue becomes a hot button issue and everyone focuses on that one issue and other issues don't get discussed. So maybe the family definition gets talked about in Oxford, but off street parking doesn't because of all the investment history and tension that has been surrounded student rentals. Whereas something that we're trying to do is get a good balance of the right amount of parking, but we're not having excess is really something that nationwide is is being dealt with. So invariably, there's going to be things that will get adopted. We hope this doesn't happen, but based on what we're seeing with other jurisdictions, there are things that get adopted that are good things. But people don't understand them until they're actually being implemented and applied and enforced and then they find out later. There's just, unfortunately, in the amount of timeframe that we're hoping to spend the money that from the federal government, there's not enough time to get into all those different scenarios. So we have to hope and trust that we put them out there and people are aware of them. It doesn't mean that we talk about all of them, but they're at least visible and transparent.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that for something as monumental as this, that it's not effectively one planning commission review and two council reviews. You know, that would not be enough for a person in the public or stakeholder to felt like they had had a chance to shape the outcome.
If you had like a preliminary application is we only actually vote on something once.
Yeah.
That's how I see the updates is we'll have an update, there'll be Q and A, there's more time for the board, like we can provide feedback. So update is, you know, I see that as a delineation between review because review will be a vote. So like I'm just thinking, and it's probably more of an HAPC, people come in and be like, hey, was this going to fly? And we'll have a conversation about, you know, the applicable rules, limitations, things of that nature. Or if somebody has a preliminary application here, we're not voting on it, we're just saying, hey, by the way, a seventy story, a seventy foot building is not going to happen. Like, so that's kind of how I envision the updates, it's not somebody coming in telling us what they're doing and what we're, you know, there is a participatory side to that. It will be agenda items, but it's less of a, you know, like end of the first quarter vote, end of the second quarter vote. That's, so they are updates, but they are conversational, we will have input, not only from boards, commissions, public, other folks. So I just, I just want to make sure that, I mean, there will be public input, but at the same time, you know, I I think of like, one of the, one of the best ways to stifle creativity is to, here's the laundry list of things you have to do, like, let's see what they have. Because again, for all we know, they helped Athens, Georgia or another like great college town and they'll come to us with something. Whereas if we, if we handcuff them right off the bat, I'm fearful that'll be like, well, compliance, here's your product as opposed to creativity.
And I don't think we're trying to handcuff them, I just think, I think it's a commitment to a certain degree of of process and transparency and public input that's meaningful at the right level. And I mean, I think that can be a general commitment. And I think Anne's really exactly right, like I'm I'm the, if we success, if we find a consultant who's successful, it's successful because they've been successful at the process and the product, you know? I doubt they're going to be very successful if they drafted a beautiful code that didn't work or whatever. And so I think that, I think that's going to be an interesting criterion, which is what is the engagement, the public engagement process or, again, we're not redoing the comp plan, but you know, a lot of people have a lot of buy in in our zoning code, you know, there are a lot of vested interests, there's not conformities. There's a lot of dollars at stake in the way the code is written and not written, and so people care mightily. And so I would, I'm not saying everybody has to be happy, some people are going to be unhappy, but they should be, feel like they were afforded an opportunity to contribute and have their voices heard, so you you get my point.
All right, any other thoughts of?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe just to build off of this a little bit and, you know, still feel fairly green up here. But I'm I'm curious, within the RFP or within the scorecard kind of language, is is there any kind of language or ability for the consultants to lay out some kind of an engagement plan that might give us a better sense of, you know, what what their plans might be for how to how to engage either commission or the broader public?
See if there's anything there. We have general experience, prior experience with projects of similar scale and complexity, specifically review and revision of legislation, zoning and land use and historic preservation that were successfully implemented in other communities with similar goals. Current trends, I'll just read them off instead of reading each one individually. Profession diversity, prior regional experience, performance history, effective scheduling. Registration qualifications of the professionals, their communication potential and their redundancy of their staffing on their consultant team. So I think experience, trends and performance history would be the the three scoring criteria that we've got in there.
Oh, communication potentially.
And communication as well.
It looked like the word engagement was under communication, so.
Okay.
So I imagine when these, when folks are bidding on this RFP, that they're going to deliver their pitch in terms of,
Right.
here's what engagement methods we would recommend. And we want to scale those appropriately. It sounds like a lot of the discussion tonight is about, you know, how how big do we need to go with our engagement, how complex does it need to be? How many meetings, you know, what sort of tools do we utilize to get feedback appropriately, but not bog down the process as a result? And so I think that can definitely be part of the conversation and part of the review is, you know, kind of relying on the expertise that can be, you know, contributed by those those firms that are bidding on the the process.
And part of the reason I'm intentionally brief in this is, I mean, this is a public meeting and anyone can watch it, but I want to make sure we don't say or do anything or decide or or sway the process. but I wanna make sure we don't say or do anything or, uh, decide or, or sway the process. Because I've been part of government contract RFPs where we had to throw out the whole thing and start over. Because of some kind of, um, you know, for example, if, if you wrote me an email and said, hey, I have a question about this RFP and I knew these three had, I had to send it out to them, this question was asked, here's the answer I provided. There are very strict guidelines to government contracts and RFP and that's part of the reason I'm guarded on the process. And I've said, uh, two or three times that the plan is to fill in the blanks as and if we know what we're dealing with. I'm also trying to make sure that even if it's in, in a hint of like, whoa, I'm watching this meeting, that board seems that, that is, is an ethical violation in an RFP process. It's supposed to be blind scoring, things, I mean, there are professional standards on that. So that's also why this is brief because, and it's draft and there's seven copies. Um, so there, I mean, there's a lot of method to the madness and if you've heard me say now the fifth time, really a lot of stuff can and will and should change or at least be clarified once we have the consultant or consultants. Um, my biggest fear is that, uh, somebody will say or do, or not say or do, and this'll get derailed. The money has an expiry on it, so that's my biggest fear. I don't wanna be like, here's everything, now write an RFP and let's hope it's fair. You know, so, that's, that's the little monkey in the back of my, my back here because this is a world I lived in, um, you know, with contracts and RFPs. So, um, and I'm not trying to speak of tues or, or anything, but I mean, I've seen some of the craziest things happen and if people, you know, that word perception in conflict of interest or RFPs is a huge derailers. So that's a lot of the brevity that, at this point.
So just, just to let it not be misconstrued, I, I mean, we did a ton of public engagement in the comprehensive plan and so we do not need to do that again, you know? But what I'm saying is this process is a democratic process if operated correctly. You know, like, it's not super democratic, but you know what the agenda item is, you know when you can come out, you know you have an opportunity to speak. And that's the way we typically draft code, like, they're not in public, you know, it's not at the middle school. Um, and so I think we've done a lot of that broad engagement on the objectives. So I guess what I'm just, just to make clear, I, I, I mean, there are probably other creative ways, but at, at the least, our process affords transparency. You know, I mean, that's why we have these rules and Robert's Rules of Order and public notification and, and I, and I think that if we, if we do all of our code revision within that, we do it properly, it should be at least sufficient, uh, you know? Um, and if there's, if there's addition, so, I mean, dollars spent on public engagement are dollars not spent on crap code writing. So I think we need to strike a, a, a balance there, but I guess I'm just saying that we do have mechanisms here to make sure that it's democratic, is, is what I'm saying.
Um, if staff is selecting the, uh, scorers, um, I mean, you can say if you wanna do it now, but frankly. Mr. Bracken's not here, he still gets a fair choice. Um, but if you're just contact Mr. Perry, um, because if there are more than, uh, if there is more than one person, I do want everyone to have a, a fair shot or ample opportunity, even if they're getting show up to the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Moore, do you have anything? I'm just gonna cut Mr. Perry off.
I do have any, any other new topics to share other than just kind of, you know, listening into your comments on the, um, code RFP and, um, yeah, in terms of, you know, my experience, as, as Sam alluded to, I've worked on a total of three zoning codes that I rewrote from scratch essentially. Uh, City of Wilmington was probably the most substantial. There was also Wayne Township in Warren County and the Village of Mainville. Um, each time I did an update, we had, um, a committee of sorts, a steering committee or task force that was specifically devoted to the code update. But I think in all of those instances, we didn't have a brand new comprehensive plan that was immediately preceding the work on the zoning code. And so it was more essential to have, you know, more of an established working group with an agenda and meeting more regularly. Um, so, I think the update to any zoning code, it's gonna be an incremental process. Um, the approach that I've taken in the past is to kind of go chapter by chapter. So you're sort of releasing or sharing a chapter at a time in draft form and then you're asking for feedback from there. And so, I'm not sure if the RFP mentions, uh, a tool like a project website at the moment, but, you know, hopefully that could then become a tool that is part of the pitch from our consultants, um, that then becomes a part of the project so that, that's a form of transparency. You know, just putting it out there for the, the public to see so it's not behind closed doors, I think that would go a long way. Um, and then I just think, you know, the comments have been shared here tonight as far as like, when it comes to these updates with planning and HAPC, you know, hopefully by the, the time that those updates roll around, there will have been some time for commission members to absorb some of the documents in draft form that have been released so that there can be ample opportunity for back and forth and, and conversation and discussion about what the exact standards are that are being proposed that are in support of the goals of the comprehensive plan. Um, so, but there's still gonna be an element of trust to it. You have to trust that staff and the consultant are gonna get this big behemoth of a project done. And when it comes to updating codes, it can be quite wicked at times when you're making, trying to make sure that everything is consistent, you know, from chapter to chapter, section to section. So, um, you know, it's important to be aware of the, 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 the overall machine that you're building and the various components, various cogs in the machine to make sure that, um, sections are talking to one another appropriately. Um, so, I, I, I expect that we'll have a pretty good grasp on all of that, um, and that the process will hopefully go pretty smoothly. And relying, of course, on the, the expertise of the consultant to guide us through as well. So, um, I'm confident that things will, will go pretty well and, um, and, and, and we'll have a transparent process for sure, um, as we go through. So, that, that's all I would have to add at this moment, I suppose.
All right. The only other agenda item is adjournment. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Don't move.
Dr. Berthrich?
Second.
Ooh. So we get a second, third, fourth, I mean, we don't have to vote. All right, uh, we'll, we'll give that to, we'll give it to Mrs. Webster. Uh, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That's the shortest meeting I think we've had in a couple of years.